All right, we're gonna re- call the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council to order Monday, March 24th, 2025 at 5:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Santez?
Yeah.
Mayor Dutton?
Here. We've got a little odd one tonight with us, guys. Uh, we're gonna do an open session, item only, consideration of possible action to appoint the city manager, city attorney, and the deputy city attorney, Zach Lopes, as the labor negotiators for the city. Any questions from staff to us?
Nope, Mr. Mayor, I think we've covered it.
Or from us to staff? And would somebody like to make a motion on doing that consideration item?
Uh, so move.
Motion on the floor by Mayor Protem Sunny Santaynez, followed by a second by Coops. Call roll.
Councilmember Coops?
Yes, aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santaynez?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Yeah, I was gonna do without objection to the order, but I figured that one couldn't be. And then I see it in my notes. Okay. Now, we're gonna recess to closed session. And Ryan, could you read the closed session item for us tonight, please?
I sure can. The city council recessed to closed session for one item. Item four A is listed on the agenda, conference with labor negotiator, negotiators.
Is there any recusals or conflicts from us? All right, let's recess to closed session, women and men. Okay, let the record show, we're reconvening from closed session to the regular meeting, and I'm gonna call this meeting to order. There was no reportable action in closed session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Santaynez?
Here.
Mayor Dutton?
Here.
Okay, can I have everybody rise for the invocation led by Councilmember Victor Sanchez and the pledge allegiance by PJ Milano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dear Lord, thank you for every seat that has been filled here today, for each mind and heart that is filled, that fills this presence of this room. We thank you. Only you truly know what we are settling, setting out to accomplish today. We have an idea, a vision, hints, and a daily instructions, and daily instructions. We have talents, abilities, and time to work. However, only you can see in perfect detail the end of every beginning, every project, every season, every life. Nothing is ever in vain, for even mistakes and missteps are used for good. Bless this meeting today, all those present, as well as the lives of those we will encounter afterward. Ready us to make every moment count. Amen.
Amen. Please place your right hand over your heart and join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna go to council member announcements. I'll start. Pay tribute to Bellflower's military heroes with Bellflower Honors Program, which offers residents the opportunity to dedicate a street pole banner or inscribed brick in recognition of the local veterans. Your contribution creates a last tribute, a lasting tribute to local veterans, ensuring that their sacrifices are remembered for generations to come. Street pole banners will be displayed along Flower Street, Alondra Boulevard, and for one of the, and between Woodruff Avenue and Bellflower Boulevard for one calendar year from the installation date. Commemorative bricks will be placed in the reflection area at the Veterans Memorial, located at 9918 Flower Street, serving as a lasting tribute for all those that served. For more information, please call 562-804-1424, extension 2258, or you can email emachado, that's capital M, Machado, M-A-C-H-A-D-O, at bellflower.org. Thank you. Mayor Protem Sunny Santaynez?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Experience an evening of talent at the Young Artist Night, Artist Night, hosted by the Bellflower Symphony Association on Saturday, April 19th. This special concert will highlight the winners of the Young Artist Concert Competition, showcasing the next generation of musicians. The, the competition was held last month. The event begins at 7:00 PM at the William and Jane Bristol Civic Auditorium inside of City Hall, located at 16600 Civic Center Drive. Whether you are a longtime supporter of the symphony or a first-time attendee, this is a night for you, you won't want to miss, and best of all, admission is free. I can tell you that this will be a wonderful concert. For more information, please call 562-888-4276. That's all, hi, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, councilmember Wendy Morse?
Thank you, Mary. Good evening, Bellflower. The Bellflower Aquatic Center is offering a variety of fun-filled activities for all ages this spring. Kick off the season with a family dive-in movie. Relax in the pool while watching Peter Rabbit on Friday, April 11th, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Pre-registration is requested online or in person. Admission is $5 a person. For more information, please contact the Bellflower Aquatic Center at 562-866-2015. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, councilmember Morse. Councilmember Victor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. The city of Bellflower is helping residents go green with a free used oil and filter recycling event on Saturday, April 26th. Bring your used oil filters and exchange it for a brand-new one for free. The event runs from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at Autozone, located at 10239 Rosecrans Avenue, and is open to Bellflower residents only. Recycling your oil filter helps protect the environment from contamination while conserving valuable resources like steel and oil. Take advantage of this opportunity to dispose of used filters responsibly and contribute to a cleaner community. For more information, please visit tinyurl.com/bellfloweroilrecycling. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councilman Sanchez. Councilmember Dan Coops?
The mic on. The next compost in the event is just around the corner. It's on Saturday, April 19th, from 7:00 to 10:00 in the morning. The CRNR Environmental Service Team will provide Bellflower residents with two free bags of compost at the Public Works Yard, and that's located at 9944 Flora Vista Street here in Bellflower. Made from organic waste collected through the city's Green Waste Program, compost is perfect for your gardening and landscaping needs. Use it to mulch to retain moisture as a soil amendment, to improve structure, it's good for potting plants, cures ailments of all kinds, apparently. Don't forget to bring a proof of residency. We're not gonna give this out unless you live to the city of Bellflower. Bring your California driver's license or a utility bill, that will suffice to prove your identity. Make sure to arrive early, as surprise are limited. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Coops. All right, item 11, public comments. Mr. Smoot?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I believe we have a presentation as well.
We have a presentation from the vector control. The Greater Los Angeles County Vector Control District, presentation by?
I believe we have some other stuff.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and honorable city council members. My name is Maritza Olmos. I am the operations manager at Greater LA County Vector Control District, and today I'll be talking to you about the services that our agency provides to you, to the Bellflower residents, and actually to myself, because I am also a resident of Bellflower. Um, our, our district is the largest of five vector control districts serving the LA County. Um, our current assessment per single-family home is 1,897 annually, and this provides services for control of mosquitoes, back, black fly, and non-biting midge as well.
Our point is currently frozen. We'll be waiting for that.
I'm sure misfiling my talking points had nothing to do with this. It's all an accident.
Mr. Mayor, while they're figuring out if you wanna do public comment and come back, we can do that if you'd like.
I might be there. It's moving. Okay.
Okay. Sorry about that. Here we go.
It's okay, you're in good company.
So mosquito-borne diseases in Bellflower, uh, we actually have a new growing threat, which is dengue fever. It's not something that you normally hear about, um, here in Southern California, but just this past year, we had 140 travel-associated cases within our district boundaries. So a travel-associated case is when an individual travels to, um, a different part of the world where dengue fever is endemic, and then they come home and they're sick with dengue fever. So our district responds so that, um, other residents and their family members don't get sick. Uh, we did have our first three locally-acquired cases within our district, um, but that was only three. In the entire LA County, there were 14 cases that were reported. An ongoing problem that we have, um, is West Nile virus. We do get cases every year, and we do monitor it very closely. It doesn't happen as often, but occasionally, we will get St. Louis encephalomyelitis as well, so just something else to keep in mind. So to combat, um, these problems, we have integrated vector management. It is a three-pillar approach. Our scientific, technical team handles all of our surveillance. Our operations team handles all of our control efforts, and our communications team handles all of our education for our residents. So, uh, our operations team, um, the ones you'll see more out, so, out in the field are the ones that you'll have high visibility with, are the ones that are responding to our service requests. Uh, so residents are free to, um, submit a service request over the phone or online if they're having any issues with mosquitoes at home. We'll come out, we'll do an inspection of their property, we'll try to locate where the mosquitoes may be coming from. If we're unable to find anything from their property, we do have the, um, capability of expanding our search and seeing if maybe it might be a neighbor or something out in the public that we, um, haven't encountered yet, and we'll go ahead and we'll provide treatment, um, or eliminate the source if possible. We also have door-to-door yard inspections as well. So all the cases that I mentioned previously, we actually go door-to-door to help reduce the mosquito population in the area and reduce the risk of it spreading to anyone else. Our staff that you'll see occasionally but won't have as much face-to-face contact with are our vector control specialists that have single routes. So they monitor and treat, um, sources that are public sources, um, just as you see in the picture, out in, um, the channels as well. We also have our swimming pool program. So in a swimming pool that may be inoperable is a big breeding ground for mosquitoes. Um, so if, say, for example, a resident dries out their swimming pool, and then it collects water from this last rain event that we had, then we'll go out, conduct an inspection, provide treatment if necessary to help reduce the risk of, um, West Nile virus. We also have our street gutter program. Um, so at times, when the street gutter, um, doesn't allow for the water to flow freely, the water will lay stagnant, which will breed mosquitoes as well. And routinely, we'll go out, we'll conduct inspections and provide treatments for those as well. Our staff that you might not notice too much, um, are out there. They're actually inspecting and treating all of our underground storm drains, so all the water that travels underground. Uh, we also have flood control channels and stormwater, uh, sources that they'll go out, they'll conduct source reduction, meaning eliminating debris so that the water can flow freely. Uh, we also have a lot of BNP units, um, so they collect, they separate the trash from the water, um, and those do have a tendency to breed as well, so we monitor them as well. In the city of Bellflower, we have over 1,700 sources that we know about. Um, so all of the orange bubbles are going to be, um, the underground storm drains that I mentioned, the water that flows underground. All the blue bubbles are, are pools and our ponds that we keep a close eye on, and all the green bubbles are going to be all the residential and public sources that we have in the city of Bellflower. This past year in 2024, we inspected and treated, oh, nearly 3,000 sources. Our scientific and technical department, they handle quite a bit, um, so they do all of our mosquito trapping and abundance as well. So they monitor for any West Nile virus activity, um, so that we know where to focus in our efforts. They also do mosquito identification, so they can keep track of what species of mosquitoes are in the area, so we know what diseases might be of concern. We also do dead bird pickup and submit for testing, so when dead birds, um, are infected with West Nile virus, um, and residents can report them, we can pick them up and submit them for testing. And along the LA River, we do do surveillance and treatments for black fly as well. A new, um, thing that we have that hopefully we can add to our program is our sterile insect technique, also known as SIT. So it's a X-ray sterilization of male mosquitoes. So male mosquitoes do not bite, um, and we release them over time in the designated area, and they'll actually mate with the wild females, and it results in unviable eggs. So some key benefits to SIT, um, it is non-chemical, meaning no pesticides, uh, which is very, very exciting. It is very eco-friendly. As I mentioned, it is, uh, results in no offspring. You can kind of think of it as family planning for mosquitoes. Overall, you'll have a reduction in the mosquito population. Um, we're in the very, very early stages of this program. Um, it does take quite a bit to get the program started, but we are already, um, having test areas and, and already seeing good results. Our communications department, um, so in the community, community level, we do have outreach, so we actually have someone out today at the farmer's market, um, going out and, um, educating the residents as much as possible, letting them know about our services so they can take advantage. We also have a youth education program where our communications team will actually go out to schools, so teachers, students, and schools can reach out and make a request, and they'll go out and they'll provide a very engaging class, um, that fits the curriculum. We also have city and community presentations, such as the one that I'm conducting today. Uh, we have traditional media, um, so TV, radio, and then social media postings as well. We want to promote public awareness of our district services. Um, we want to educate the public as much as we can about mosquitoes and the diseases they can transmit. So we are asking for you to partner up, partner with us, um, follow and share any, um, district-related updates that we have on your social media accounts, on your city platforms. Um, please encourage residents to call us. We are more than happy to respond, um, if they're having any mosquito issues in their area, if they just don't know where it's coming from. We pride ourselves on a quick response. We usually come out within three business days. Um, we try to provide excellent customer service, as I mentioned. If we're unable to find the source within their own property, we try to expand the search and help educate the public so that we can reduce the mosquito population. And then if possible, um, to add, we would like to add a district tab to your city website so that residents have easier access to our services. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Is, is it Marissa, Marsha?
Maritza.
Marissa, okay. Go ahead, Victor.
Hi, thank you, Maritza, for the presentation. Uh, just for the record and for the public, um, to be clear, if they call for services, there is no fee associated to-
That is correct.
The resident, right?
That is correct. It is all tax-supported services, so it's covered, um, we're-
In other words, they've already paid for it?
Correct. Correct.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for your presentation, Maritza.
You're welcome.
Dan, you have any?
There's 1,397 pools. Are those the problem pools, or is that the total amount of swimming pools in the city?
So, let me, let me go back. Um, those are the problematic ones. Um, so if you're unsure if-
How many good ones do we have?
It's a lot.
Yeah, there, there's quite a bit. Let me pull it back up.
It's 1,400 swimming pools are putting out mosquitoes.
Yes, um, so we actually have-
Really?
88 ponds and pools that we look at.
So includes ponds?
Yes.
Well, look at the 1,347 there.
That's, uh, residential and public sources, and then just underneath that, ponds and pools.
Oh, 88. Oh, 88 ponds and pools, Dan, that are problems.
So are there 1,347 swimming pools in Bellflower?
No, not to my knowledge.
So what's that number?
What is 1,347? What does that number indicate?
Residential and public sources, so if, say, for example-
It could be a spare tire in the backyard, right?
Potentially, uh, a business has a drain out in their driveway, um, it can be a variety of different things, a fountain that, uh, might be too large to, um, dump over, tip over. It's a, a wide variety of different sources that residents can have.
Okay, that makes more sense, but you can see how I read it.
I do, I do.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Maritza, for your presentation, and let me add to that, uh, also, because , uh, Bellflower is relatively flat, so there's a lot of gutters that are not flowing properly, so water is stagnant, so that, that's also part of that 1,347-
Yes.
-as potential.
Yes.
Uh, just for the benefit of the public, do, do you have a map of the, um, vector control district coverage? Because I want him to see the area that's covered by the district. It goes all the way from Santa Clarita all the way to Cerritos.
Oh, yes, we cover a very large area over-
Yeah, we can talk about that more.
Yes, we cover over 1,000 square miles, so we do have two offices. We have our headquarters in Santa Fe Springs, and then we have our summer office, which is, um, the office I actually work out of, and we can, we go as far north as Castaic, so Santa Clarita area. Um, we go as far, um, southwest as San Pedro, so we're the yellow-orange color. Um, and then we go, um, into parts of Long Beach, but we do share the Long Beach territory with, uh, Long Beach Public Health, and then we go as far east as Diamond Bar. Um, so a very, very large area, um, and then that is, uh, separated by the two offices.
And on the northwest, that goes all the way to Lacanada Plintridge?
Yes, that's correct.
So it's, it's really a wide area that's been covered by the district. By the way, just, just FYI, I'm on the board of the, um, uh, Vector Control District, and I currently serve as the, uh, Secretary Treasurer this year. Uh, question to staff, um, there was a request to add a tab in our website, is that something that we can, we can do?
Certainly something we can, like, do for sure. If that's the council wants.
All right. And then also, um, Maritza, we have the, uh, the district has the, the educational bus?
Yes.
Is that something that our Parks and Rec can take advantage of, especially during our, our street fest event?
Yes, definitely.
Coming, coming the summer?
Definitely.
So maybe our Parks and Rec staff can, uh, can contact Maritza and schedule that, because I think that's a very good educational means to, um, to inform our public, especially the kids.
Yes, so our, our educational unit, it's, um, pretty much like a classroom on wheels. So they, the students and even when we have them, uh, we've came to the street fest in the past, um, it has microscopes, they can look at live specimens, very, very educational and interactive. Um, it does have a 3D, um, interactive screen that they can see the anatomy of mosquitoes. Um, it's a really great tool, um, kids actually get very, very excited about it. Um, we're more than happy to set something up for the street fests that will be coming up, and then they also take the educational bus, um, to schools as well.
Yeah, okay. Um, and then on the SIT program, that's the sterilization, um, I, I went to the demonstration in Orange County at Los Alamitos, and i- it's a great program.
It is, it is. Um, so as I mentioned, um, the male mosquito does not bite, um, and when it is sterilized, and then we release them in a, right now, we're doing just a test area, but we release them and they mate with the female mosquito. Um, the female mosquito only mates once, and then it can leave eggs multiple times, so that's what makes it effective, is that it only needs to mate with a sterilized male once. Um, and we've been seeing really great results in our test area, a very big reduction in mosquito, uh, populations, and we're hoping to grow that program. It just ta, it does take a while to get it up and going, um, and we are in the early stages, but we're seeing great results already.
What is the major challenge for, um, the SIT program at this time?
I think for the most part is, um, having the space to conduct all of the rearing of the mosquitoes. Um, the equipment is very expensive. It's more so kickstarting the program, um, but then once they're able to sterilize the males, find the right dosage where the male mosquitoes won't, um, die once they're released or be in, incapable of mating with the females and be able to compete with the wild males as well. Um, so it does take quite a bit, um, but we're fine-tuning, we're working on having more releases this year, and hopefully continuing to see good results.
And the, and the mosquitoes are being released from an airplane?
No.
Correct?
No, not at the, no, not at this moment.
At this moment?
No, so-
Haven't they tried, haven't they tried that?
Um, so there's, um, the thought is that there might be too much damage to the mosquito at that height and that speed. So at the moment, um, they are releasing, I think I have a picture of them-
Drones?
-a little bit further down, but we do have them in, um, a container- and then, um, they are released here.
Is that released from a pickup truck, or?
Oh, yes, that is the plan in the future. Um, so the plan in the future is to, when we're able to release on a grander scale, is to be able to drive down a neighborhood, um, open up, um, the cabin in the back to allow for the male mosquitoes to fly out. But at the moment, um, since we're just doing a controlled area, um, we are releasing them, um, manually out in the field with, uh, the container, and we let them fly out. We keep, we do keep track of which ones aren't able to make it out to see if we need to adjust the dosage of the X-ray, also to have better, uh, better data as to how many male mosquitoes actually made it out, so that we know, um, at that quantity, how it's affecting the population.
Yeah, okay, good, thank you. Um, one more thing, this is your opportunity to address our residents, uh, uh, in about 30 seconds, what can you tell them, or what can you ask them to help control the mosquito population?
We've just had a ton of rain events, so please walk your property. Um, everyone thinks that they don't have stagnant water, um, it's easy to kind of think, oh, no, I don't have any, but, um, walk your property. If you're not sure, give us a call. We're more than happy to come out. Like I mentioned, we come out relatively quickly. Um, you'll have a trained eye taking a look, um, being able to educate you. Uh, the thing is that we have a new mosquito in the area that's very aggressive, um, it tends to bite the ankles, um, and it'll bite you any time of day. I'm sure most people are familiar with it, because it lets its presence be known. Um, so tip any water, reach out to us, we're more than happy to provide any and all services that we can.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sunny, I have a question for you, since you're the accountant over there. What is-
I'm the treasurer and the secretary right now.
You're the guy. What is your, when you get $18.97 per parcel from the LA County tax? What is your budget?
Oh, I forgot the budget already.
That's pretty basic stuff.
It needs to, it needs to be, uh, it needs to be increased.
It's not enough, huh?
That's, yeah, it's not enough. For the service that they provide-
I mean, that $19 per parcel, that's a-
Per parcel, I know.
That's a lot of money.
That's not a lot of money, if you think about it. If you think of, that includes commercial and residential, it's all, it's about the same, so it's by parcel.
Right.
So... It's not a lot of money, if you think about it. Just, just one service call, $19? Come on. It's gonna, you're gonna spend a lot more money to, to spray your, um, just, let's say, if you have a, um, a used tar with standing water, just to spray that, it's gonna cost you more than $20 to fix that issue.
Maybe Maritza knows what the answer to the question. What is your budget?
I don't remember the budget.
Well, maybe she does, she's in it every day.
Do you know the budget?
I don't.
Oh, see.
But, um, it is less than $19, and that's, uh, the one charge for the entire year. Um, and, um, you know, there's, there's a lot of truth behind it, that you'd spend more on chemicals at Home Depot or a private pest control company, so, um, give us a call. We're more than happy to help any way that we can.
Well, let's put it this way, uh, how much do you pay for a Starbucks? Well, you don't, you don't buy Starbucks.
I don't buy $5 hot water, you know.
Yeah, I know. But a, a typical person spends $7 for Starbucks. That's basically just three cups of Starbucks.
Well- Well, you put it in that way, it is a good deal.
It's over, yeah. I can, what they do is basically economies of scale. Because when they spray a certain area, it takes care of a wide area. For example, let's say, if there's standing water by the riverbed, for example, that takes care of a lot of mosquitoes in the area. So if we divide those, that area into the parcels, then yes, it's very inexpensive.
I understand you have aircraft?
No, they, they rent, well, they, they partner with Los Alamos, with Orange County Vector Control District, and they try to disperse the moski, I was there for the demonstration. It's kind of cool. They loaded, it's in the, like the, what do you call that? You know, the, when you go to a bake shop, they have layers and layers of bread. That's where the mosquitoes are encased.
Like cookie sheets. Cookie sheets on racks.
They're in boxes. They pull them, and they load it in an airplane, and then they disperse them initially. I guess that, that did not work.
No, at this, at this time, we're, we're not quite there yet.
Yeah, so, but it's kind of, if, if they can make it work, it's a lot more, it's a lot easier to disperse these mosquitoes compared to the back of a pickup truck.
Right.
Because they can cover more area.
No, I would think so.
How far does a mosquito fly in its lifetime?
It depends on...
One mile, two miles?
It depends on the species, so...
The average species. Not the Olympic one.
Not the Olympic one?
Well, but keep in mind, the lifespan is very short for a mosquito. That's the key.
Yes.
That's what I was guessing. Is it one mile, or, you know?
Yes. So our native mosquito that can carry West Nile virus is more about a mile. This aggressive ankle biter is no more than a hundred and fifty meters. So, and they're actually very territorial. So if you're having a lot of ankle biting at home, it's more than likely coming from a three-house, four-house radius.
Councilmember Coops, the budget for vector control is projected to be twenty-four million in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
That seems enough.
Very, very low.
Very low.
From Santa Clarita, Santa Clarita all the way to Diamond Bar.
How many employees do you have?
Third, how many employees?
How many, what, I'm sorry?
How many employees?
Close to a hundred, and then we bring on our seasonal staff, which is about thirty-six individuals. So we're looking at about a hundred and thirty-five or so during the season.
You run a surplus? No, I guess not.
There's a tiny surplus.
Okay.
Okay, we done picking on Mayor Protem?
Maritza, thank you so much. Very good presentation.
That was one heck of a, that was one heck of a baptism.
Well, he's the treasurer.
Thank you, Maritza.
No, brand-new treasurer.
We'll want a balance sheet next time you ring.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, we made it to public comments again, Mr. Smoot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the City Council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. And if you wish to address the City Council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given three minutes to address the City Council.
Okay, this is the time to come up to the podium. Anybody who wants to, state your name in the mic, sign in. I noticed some people already signed in, and talk about anything that is not on the agenda. Ms. Williams.
I didn't sign in yet. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I just wanted to comment. We've had our water line, main water line replaced recently by American Water. When I was on the Water Commission, I was against selling it, but I want to tell you, they're doing an outstanding job. They've really, when they're out there, they have dumps of gravel and sand and stuff, and there'd be somebody out there squirting it down so the dust didn't fly around. They never blocked a driveway. They cleaned up immaculately every time when they got done. And I just wanted you to know that they are doing a really, really good job.
Well, thank you for the good thoughts.
Is your water pressure increased, Cheryl? That's the best part.
It's about the same, but...
Well, that was, well, our hope was you're gonna get better water pressure and cleaner water.
Well, I drink bottled water, so I...
Well, but you...
One thing, too, we did get a new fire hydrant across the street from our house.
No, and it'll have water in it, too.
I know they've been out there testing it, but the crew is, has been really nice. And like I say, they never blocked our driveways. Very personable. They came out and hooked up the new water line. They had to pressure test it. I was always out there talking with them, of course, bothering them. But, and I let their construction company know, and I let California American Water know what a great job. But I wanted you guys to know, too, that they really are doing a good job.
Thank you. All right, next.
Hello.
Hello.
Mayor, council members. This is my first time attending, so forgive me. But anyways, my name is Pauline. I've been living here at Bellflower as a relatively new resident, and we love the city here. We have noticed recently that the public parking, well, the, the structural public parking has just released...
The parking structure?
Yes, yes. Just released new signage where there is no overnight parking allowed anymore. We understand that that's probably due to people's cars being broken in, and it just provides like a, not a safe environment, especially if leaving your car overnight. It kind of makes the city, I guess, responsible for that. So we understand that aspect, but we, or at least I was just more concerned about how will residents now find overnight parking, especially with the apartment complex across the street at Edgeway? Even though they, the apartments do provide parking, like on the first level, that doesn't necessarily mean that's enough parking for all residences who own a car. And we always have a concern of having a very difficult time finding overnight parking. So I wanted to see if the council has ever considered looking into long-term parking for residents that, you know, yeah, for the residents who live there, in like a, as like a permit-style parking.
The residents that live where?
Uh, in, at, just in the apartment.
In the area?
In the area, yeah.
Oh, in the areas?
So just have it provided, you know, for any residences who would, would like to park there. Yeah, just something I wanted to bring up, and it's my first time being here, so thank you for listening.
So let me, yeah, that's cool. So, you know, tell me where you live. So are you parking, are you live, you have a residence on Main Street, or?
Well, I live in Edgeway.
Oh, you're in Edgeway, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Gotcha.
Well, they should have parking for you then.
They should have parking in Edgewood, okay, for guests to come over to your house.
For, there is guest parking. And for the residents in the apartment complex, there is available parking.
Right.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that there is enough parking for everyone living in an apartment. For example, you can have...
Somebody, yeah, if you have six cars to a three-bedroom house, right?
For example. Yeah, just wanted to bring it up, if that was something that could be considered for the future for Bellflower. Yeah.
That was a very expensive undertaking for us to do. We don't foresee one doing in the near future, but there's always that option to put parking somewhere else. Yes, we're always looking for parking. We, as a city, are very parking poor. The state isn't helping us much when now you can convert single-family garages into living structures, and you don't have to park on your property. So the state is mandating less parking at, at, at housing. So they spill onto the streets, and now there's, you know, you know, we have parking a problem on the streets, and it spills into the... It's a challenge for the city of Bellflower, is what I'm trying to explain. And the rules have changed for what we have. There's no quick fix, but we're always trying to control it. And as you know about the problems and that, at that parking structure over, since it was built, with the security up there, and the nonsense that's been there, and the elevators that don't work because of the nonsense, we're still trying to figure out how, what works best for that, that structure. We are trying.
All right, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming out.
Yeah.
Hold my thunder. Greetings and thank you for your time. My name is Martin Anderson. I live on the ninety-six-hundred block of Main, M-R-Y-I-N, Street.
Of Main and...
What's that?
Of, of Main and what?
Main Street, the ninety-six-hundred block.
Ninety-six-hundred block, okay, you're, you're where I thought she lived.
Forgive me, I haven't been this nervous since calling before the principal's office, so...
Gotcha.
Recently, you passed this ordinance restricting parking on the, overnight parking in the parking structure. And, and in part because what I observed, the poor design of the Edgeway apartment complex. Instead of cars parking side-by-side in the parking, they're parked...
Right.
So if, you know, people come and go, so I presume they're parking, I see empty spots, and I see cars in the parking structure. And also, as I, you, you mentioned about the state ordinance, or the...
Yeah, with the converting to garages, or anything you have, or ADUs that weren't there before, don't need...
Consequently, the streets are getting full, full up.
Yes.
And so I would, I would plead that you, you rescind that overnight parking restriction on the, on the parking structure. If nothing else, allow it on Wed, on Wednesday nights for the, what I call a poor street sweeping schedule, instead of one side being swept, and then the next day, we, we have to have both sides of the street completely vacated for parking, or for street sweeping. So a lot of us would park on the parking structure on Wednesday nights, so that, you know, for the, again, I'm nervous here.
Yeah, it wasn't just the parking at the structure that they got changed with stuff. It was all downtown area, am I right?
Yeah.
I wasn't there because I had, I couldn't, I can talk to you, but I was conflicted out of that one.
I don't know, I don't know about all downtown, but...
Yeah, it was changed, and this is the first time we've had residents, usually it's the business owners that are mad at us.
Well, you know...
It's okay. I mean, we'll get through this.
As you mentioned, the, like ninety-six, twenty-three on Main Street, there was a single-family dwelling that was converted into a duplex, and then less than a year later, they converted their garage into another duplex.
Yeah.
So how many cars for each unit? Now they're all parked on the street.
We can't even control that. Our hands are tied.
On the corner of Main and Orchard, you have a, a single-family residence that was torn down.
Yeah, it's torn down. There's a fence around it. I saw that the other day.
So you have three-bedroom, three-two-bedroom units with no parking on, on property at all.
So have you, do you know that there's permit parking allowed? If you, if the, the block has, the block, everybody signs a letter to do it. There's a process, you can go. But you, you gotta tax yourself to do it, and then you'll have, you know, spaces available only for the street people, people live on that street.
Well, I don't know, I don't know about permit, but we just park on the street if we can find a parking spot.
So you say you live there, if, and I can have our public safety gentleman that's here, Brian McNary, talk to you about it and give you... It's just more than I can tell you. Basically, what it is, if it gets through the, the Public Safety Commission or whatever, and you have, you have to get a, a lot of signatures over, I don't know how, what the threshold is, say, I'm gonna just only guess, over fifty percent of the threshold of people on the block.
Right.
And then they can put a sign at each end, and that way, only people that can park there that has a permit to park there, that's only people that live on the street that can park there.
Okay, well, like I said...
But you have, you know, but it comes with a cost.
Okay, well, that's, that's why I would like to see you rescind the restriction on overnight parking in the parking structure itself.
Yes. If I may jump in, what I'm taking from the comments, too, is they have a similar issue as the concern that was brought up at another time by the mobile home park at Vans. It sounds like their issue is really on street sweeping day, because they have nowhere to, when you have to vacate both blocks completely...
That's a whole lot of cars.
That's a whole lot of cars, and where do you put them? And obviously, there are people that have multiple cars that are, that are renting at Edgeway, or that live at Edgeway, who don't have a place to lift them out. So the...
Is your street swept early in the morning, down at six, and first seven?
The street has to be vacated by eight AM until, I think, twelve or one o'clock. Usually, they come around, come through around ten-thirty.
If you don't get up early enough, they've got you.
Well, my problem is I work nights.
Oh, see.
And I get home around two, two AM. And thanks to all the, these duplexes with no parking on site, I'm lucky to find a parking spot at all. And the parking structure's always been a backup for me. Also, on a side note, we have, on the ninety-six-hundred block, we, I know I'm way over time here.
It's okay.
We, we have an ongoing issue where the, years ago, the Presbyterian Church had a white zone, or has a white zone. But because of kids hanging out and such, they fenced, they gated that off, and they, they use their parking lot now, and they never use that white zone. So if we park in the white zone, we get cited for it. And then a few years back, they painted a red zone, two car, uh, two parking spots down from a fire plug. Why they couldn't have put the red zone where the fire plug was. So now technically, we've got, we've lost the, between the white zone and the red zone.
Is that white zone like two parking places?
Oh, no, it's more like four.
Oh, really? Okay, we'll look into that.
Three, three and a half or four, depending on how you park. You know, so that's, that's kind of an issue, too. But of course, on street sweeping day, we still can't park there.
I'll have our Public Safety Director, he's back there, he'll, he'll get you, and talk to you about the permit parking option, and then that white curb, tell him where it is, and he can do some research.
That's, I, that's, I never thought about that, but I was just, like I said, hoping that you might consider rescinding the overnight parking on the, on the parking structure.
And we'll see how many people, we have two tonight, the first two, right?
Well, the signs are brand-new.
Right, they're brand-new. They just went up.
You know, last week, the week before last, I went to park there on a Thursday night when I got home, and I saw the, I'm going, was that sign always there?
The council meeting was thirty to sixty days ago, when the decision was made, or whatever. Did you have anything else on this, Vickor?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, no, I just wanted to add for our conversation, if we, and I can bring it up during council comments, I'm okay.
All right.
Mayor, if I can just jump in. With regards to the lady's comment about the Edgeway, when Edgeway was, was being proposed to us, they guaranteed us that they have enough parking for the residents. So the parking structure was not designed for them at all.
Well...
So the residential area, that should be covered by their own parking spaces.
Well, I don't live at the Edgeway, but I, having observed it, because you can see in the garage, like I said...
I'm just kind of, I'm just, sir, I'm just alerting you and all the residents here in Bellflower, ADUs is gonna be creating a significant pressure on parking.
Oh, exactly, on the corner of Main and Orchard.
So for example, let's say, let me just finish there. For example, let's say you have a one-car garage, and you have a unit in the back. Let's say you have two parking, two parking spaces in the garage, and you have three bedrooms. So typically in California, you have three people living in a car, in a house, and they park on the garage and on the driveway. So there's no pressure on the street parking, because you have four parking spaces with three cars typically.
Right.
Now, with the garage conversion, you're adding more people into the garage and taking out more cars out of the garage. Where will they go on the street?
Exactly.
So now, I'm, I'm alerting all of you, and also the listening public, because of Sacramento's rules, they are now allowed to allow construction of units along, within a half a mile of a transportation corridor, without, without parking requirements. So I can build a hundred-unit apartment complex along Bellflower Boulevard, and there's no parking requirements.
And that's what's going on right now.
That's gonna be even worse.
Yeah.
So...
And this is gonna be, throughout the city, this is gonna be a, if you happen to have any friends in Sacramento, get them to repeal that.
It's a minor issue. Once that starts the ball rolling, it's gonna be a lot worse.
Yeah.
So we're the, we're the ones that, that people can touch, so to speak, right? Like tonight, that's why we're here. We get it. But we saw this snowball coming at us when it was real, a little years ago. And it's, it's who society puts in Sacramento, is we get what we get.
Exactly. Well, again...
We can't control them. They just, and we, we cannot do nothing. We gotta allow it.
Right. Well, that's, once again, you, you have control of the parking structure.
Right, we can only manage the resources we have.
Yeah, so if you could rescind that and allow us to park there overnight, or at least on Wednesday nights for street sweeping day.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
If you have any other questions.
Mr. Coops?
So one of the reasons that we were concerned about overnight parking is obviously the homeless going in there and sleeping in their cars.
Understood.
And so the only way we can try to control that is not to allow them to go in there overnight.
You got no argument from me there.
So understand that. Now, if I turn to the rest of my colleagues here who approved the parking structure, the primary reason for us building that was two things. We wanted to show support for the main event center, and to provoke parking for our retailers on Bellflower Boulevard. Was not the primary reason we built that thing.
Yes, exactly.
So if the residents are using it, that's fine. But it really wasn't built for the residents to use. Am I being too caustic here?
No, you're not. But that's the real reason. With, with the ongoing things that just...
But there's problems, yeah.
Well, I just want to put that on the record that, you know, we gave a lot of thought to building this thing, and we probably need to build more. But that's a ten-million-dollar structure.
Yeah.
And we spent a fortune to maintain it.
I, I have a pet peeve, though, why they didn't take up... I, I have a pet peeve though, why they didn't take up, you know, there's a section that's all grass, why they didn't make the parking structure take up all the, all the property, you know, because it's on an angle, and where there's just a grassy field, as opposed to making the whole structure take up the whole property.
Well, there's three hundred and some spaces in the place.
Yeah.
So that should take care of the needs for retailers and for the main, which was our primary, we had a ten million dollar building across the street that needed parking, otherwise they couldn't rent the building out for events, and that was where that was meant to go. Now, if we have residents parking their infinitum, then we don't have space for the retailers, for the employers of the retailers, or the people that are going to the main. So you get your last pig at the trough, you know what I'm saying?
I understand. Well, this pig, this pig's here to eat.
And you gotta ask for it, you know, but I just wanted to give you a little history of how we ended up with that thing there.
Oh, I, I figured as much, much, but like I said, I just wanted to throw, combine and say hello.
And I get it, but we're squeezed for parking, and as the state has mandated, and you mentioned it, and I wondered what was gonna put on that corner, that house was seven hundred thousand dollars, what could you, and they tear it down, and you said it, they're gonna put three spaces, three units up there.
Well, three two-bedroom units.
Right, so.
Figure two bedroom unit's gonna have at least six cars, if not eight or ten.
And there you go, but that was a seven hundred thousand dollar sale on a teardown.
And we're, we're already packed as far as, there's no parking at two o'clock in the morning.
But I do think it's, the most relevant thing we've talked about is whether or not we can contact the Presbyterian Church and see if they're gonna relinquish that white zone in front. That might get you back four or five spaces.
That would be appreciated, and maybe move that red zone over to where the fire plug is too.
Possibly, but I think that's something to consider, that might help more than anything else we've said tonight.
But of course, on street sweeping night, that doesn't help matters, so.
No, that's a difficult time. And then we, we send it, we allow you to park on your front yard during that sweeping time, did you know that?
Well, we don't have a front yard in our complex.
There you go, okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Martin, and, you know, this gentleman in the far corner there will assist you with questions, okay? You bet. Hello.
Good evening, Councilmember and Mayor. So my name is Paddy Ochoa, and I'm from.
Patty, did you say Patty?
Patty, yes.
Okay.
Paddy Ochoa, and I'm here from Altmed Viva Gold, we've now opened our site here in Bellflower, and so Viva Gold is a different type of Altmed, we are tailored to seniors. So our exam rooms were designed thinking in seniors in mind, we have technology, we have our own concierge team that actually picks up the phone, a separate line than all of our other patients that call our Altmed location. So we did open December sixteenth, we have been struggling a bit, so we would hope that, hopefully, we brought some flyers, and hopefully you guys can share them on different platforms so that we can start to serve our Bellflower community, yes, our patients.
Of course.
And worship facility?
I'm sorry?
Worship facility?
We are on Rosecrans and Woodruff.
Rosecrans and Woodruff, okay.
Yes, right across the street from the Dollar Tree.
Okay.
Wayne Brown's property.
Yeah.
Used to be, um.
Conno.
Conno, there you go, all right.
When I was a kid, it was a blur, you cashed in your blue chip stamps, you don't even know what a blue chip stamp is, you're too young.
Don't forget Greens, Greens.
And Greens.
So our, so the criteria to become a patient of Altmed Viva Gold is sixty-two plus, you must have Medicare, and then sixty-one and under, actually, sorry, opposite, sixty-two plus, all types of insurance, sixty-one and under, you must have Medicare, and we do also have sliding fee scale programs available for those that are uninsured.
Have you joined the Chamber of Commerce?
Have we?
The Chamber of Commerce? They're planning on, so, I'm Carla Torres, I'm Manager of Community Affairs, and I did, that is part of our community engagement strategy, to start collaborating with community-based organizations and local businesses, and hopefully we can collaborate with your Department of Community Relations in order to develop wellness programs and also to participate in your events.
You just need to get the word out, you know, and one of the things we offer is when you buy your city business license, we give to you as a gift, one-year membership in the Chamber of Commerce. So you need to make that contact, and if you, they'll even do a grand opening for you, if you'd like to have some balloons and a ribbon cut, that would go with it. The Chamber's all about that.
We're hoping to have that in May sometime.
Okay, well, and they will help you with that.
And we'll definitely let you guys know.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, they'll show up for the party.
Okay, and then, who can I leave the flyers to? Any other questions, guys?
So I'm just curious, what happened to Conno?
Not sure, we are Altmed and we're here to stay.
Okay. Because they had, they have the grand opening a couple of years ago.
I believe so, they didn't last too long, is what I know, but he can go ahead and.
I, I was there.
Yeah, no, I think they simply scaled back, right, and so all of their expansion to California, they, they shut down, and so basically, we were able to, Altmed as an organization was able to take over all of their sites across LA and Orange County.
And I'm sorry, sir, who, what's your name again?
I am Rolando Chavez, I'm with the Government Relations Team at Altmed Health Services.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thanks. Okay, anybody else wanna come up to the mic? Hi, John.
Well.
Long time no see.
I would say so, quite a while. Well, I've got a couple items to bring up tonight, might take a little time, but you've got a deal here, not just here in Bellflower, it's in the state of California, it's also in the United States. You've got these electric bikes. There is none of these electric bikes that have a tag for DMB, for registration, which means the state's losing money, which means the city's losing money, which also, none of them, and they're still, you look at it, they're categorized as a motorcycle, not a damn one of them have been to a motorcycle class to get their registration to drive one.
I think the state controls that.
At least ninety-nine percent haven't. The other part is, they just zing around the street, I almost hit two of them already, cut it off, who cares on the lights, go down the sidewalk, and it's straight, and the go-karts are the same thing, these kids run around with those, the parents even doing it, none of them are licensed, none of them have a license, none of them have insurance on it. So if one of them hits me, they have no insurance, they sue me. This is state, city, US, same shit. Something needs to be done, nobody's looking at it, everybody's ignoring it, but if you hit one of them, they own you. So what I'm saying right now, I think this city staff with this city attorney and this city manager needs to promote something to the state of California to adjust this, otherwise, if for some reason it doesn't come into effect, they're taken care of, and I hit one of them, then I'm gonna hold the city of Bellflower responsible and the Sheriff's Department responsible.
Okay.
That guy standing out there, I would like to see him come in here and explain what their rights are on taking care of this problem.
You wanna meet him?
Yeah.
I'll bring him in here.
I would like him to come in here and say, hey, to you people, here's what we can do.
If you're not nice, I'm gonna have him come in here and take you out.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm talking about. If you're not nice, you're gonna be out of here.
Well, this is.
You wanna meet him?
Yeah.
Can we have the sheriff in here?
I would like to hear him say.
No, he's coming in for one reason, John, because you're not nice.
And the other part is, when are we gonna get a police agency in this town that actually takes care of problems? We haven't had none with the Sheriff's Department of Lakewood, and I can attest to that, when I've taken and filed complaints with them.
Your time's up.
Huh?
Your time's up, you're either sitting down, or the sheriff's gonna escort you out.
Everybody's time is up, I've watched this time go.
You're not nice, John, I'm sorry.
Here, there's your paperwork, here's your other stuff, you wanna do nothing, you don't do nothing. Have a good time.
Thank you, John.
Follow the comments, anybody else want to follow?
Yeah, anybody top that?
Yeah.
Now tell me everybody's scared. Anyway, okay, where are we at here? We're gonna talk about trees, money for trees.
Fourteen A.
Item fourteen A, consideration item, Mr. Smoot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Wong Su's gonna go ahead and take this item for us, he's been working with this grant for quite some time now, and he's pretty familiar, and I think Len's available for questions if you need as well. Wong Su, it's all yours.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of City Council, that item before you tonight is item fourteen A, for your consideration to authorize the city manager to complete the urban forestry management plan and to designate an alternative funding source to complete the plan. To provide a brief background, the city was awarded a million-dollar grant from the U.S. Forestry Services last year during the Biden administration, and prior to the Biden administration, the U.S. Forestry's allocation for this grant nationwide was approximately fifty to sixty million dollars per year. However, as a result of the Inflation Reduction Act, this grant ballooned to over eight billion dollars, which is probably, probably what is drawing the new administration's attention to this grant now. Nonetheless, due to the sheer magnitude and the rapid increase in funding, the federal government partnered with twelve non-governmental organizations for the programmatic and fiscal oversight of this grant. Of the twelve organizations, Bellflower was selected to work with Green Latinos, who we entered into a contract with back in July of twenty twenty-four, with City Council's approval. And in the following month, the city partnered with West Coast Arborists to begin the development of the Urban Forestry Management Plan, which will serve as the city's primary long-term tool in achieving a sustainable, equitable, and cost-effective means of managing the city's green space and forestry. Just for the public, the Urban Forestry Management Plan is a comprehensive action document that provides details on the city's tree inventory reports, canopy assessments, urban forestry operations, maintenance, best practices, plant health care, climate resiliency, and planting plans, implementation plans, and so on. And this is the plan that West Coast Arborists has been working on since August of twenty twenty-four, and they've been working on it through the early days of February, and that is when we got the abrupt email from our national pasture partners, Green Latinos, to cease all work and to stop incurring any costs, as the city was, as the national pasture partners, Green Latinos was unsure of the future of the grant. The contract for the Urban Forestry Management Plan was contracted for eighty thousand dollars, of which we spent sixty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars thus far. Through twenty twenty-four, the city expended forty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. To date, we just heard at the end of last week that Green Latinos has reimbursed forty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars of that, sixty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to date. However, we've also submitted a reimbursement request for the twenty-one thousand for Q1 of twenty twenty-five, which Green Latinos is currently reviewing, however, they notified the city that, they will notify us when they hear back from the U.S. Forestry Services, and the future of that is uncertain.
It's possible the money's drying up, is what you're saying, okay.
And so that leaves us with fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars of that contract with, with West Coast Arborists to complete that Urban Forestry Management Plan, and it also goes to say that that fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, Green Latinos is also notifying the city that they are uncertain with, if we choose to proceed, we will be proceeding at our own risk, and we will not, there is no high degree of certainty whether we would get that money back or not as well. And as of today, the citywide tree inventory update, and the draft version of the Urban Forestry Management Plan is actually complete, and it's, I would say, it's approximately eighty to ninety percent completed. The only part that is remaining is the community engagement and educational component, where we would reach out to the community with some sort of survey of some kind, and then we would actually have to get in touch with West Coast again to discuss exactly the details about that, and then, once we've gone through that community engagement component, we would check in with West Coast Arborists, where they would compile the final version of that plan, which they would bring back to the council. And Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, we're really at a crossroad here, essentially what is happening is with the eighty thousand dollars for, that's allocated for this, this plan, with the forty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars that we've received back, at least that's a guarantee that we have it back now, the twenty-one thousand dollars we already, we've already paid the West Coast Arborists for that work. However, the fork in the road that we're at now is we can either stop here, and that twenty-one thousand dollars goes to waste, and we have no Urban Forestry Management Plan, or we can push through and authorize the city managers to complete the Urban Forestry Management Plan and expand approximately fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty more dollars to get this plan that will possibly benefit the Bellflower Broad community as a whole. And so, worst-case scenario, if we choose to move forward with this plan, the city would be paying thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for this plan.
So, go ahead.
Yeah, so, the city has halted all the work over the last month, as we hear, as we wait to hear back from Green Latinos, and they've been letting us know, they've been keeping us updated as changes arise. However, even though Green Latinos last week has given us the green light to resume work, this warrants a cautious approach, as they've made it very clear to us, as if we've moved forward, we're doing so at our own risk. And so with that, tonight's staff is recommending that council authorize the city manager to complete the Urban Forestry Management Plan, currently in progress with West Coast Arborists, and designate an alternative funding source to complete the Urban Forestry Management Plan in lieu of awarded grant funds being suspended by the federal government, or alternatively discuss and take other actions related to this item. That concludes my presentation, and Mr. Grecky and I are here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might add, of course, if we're able to submit for reimbursement for these funds, because remember, the grant's been approved, so if we're able to submit for reimbursement, of course, we'll be going to do that.
Hope the best.
Yeah.
So we've paid sixty-five thousand to West Coast already.
Yes, sir.
And we're short fifteen, it was estimated eighty thousand for the project, right?
The project as a whole, yes, sir.
So it's only fifteen thousand more, but I saw, we were short to fourteen to thirty-five thousand, what was that thirty-five thousand number?
Twenty-one and fourteen.
Oh, okay, got it, okay, that's, okay, that makes sense, thank you, Captain.
Yeah.
So, West Coast Arborists is doing the, the plan, what is Green Latinos doing? Are they managing it?
So Green, Honorable Mayor, the Green Latinos is one of the national pasture partners that were selected by the federal government. Due to the magnitude of the grant being over a billion dollars, the federal government had to partner up with twelve non-governmental organizations, Green Latinos is one of them. Green Latinos is providing the programmatic and fiscal oversight of the grant.
Okay, it's administration?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I needed to know, okay. So that administration fee for Green Latinos is included into the eighty thousand?
There are no administrative fees for Green Latinos, they are just, they're just our grant managers.
They're hoping to get paid too, like us.
They're the middlemen for us and the U.S. Forestry Services.
But the forestry is paying them?
Yes.
Got it, okay, so, okay, so we're only obligated in, is with West Coast, okay. That's my question, I got that out of the way, who wants to go?
Well, yeah, well, thank you, Mr. Smoot, for your presentation, to me, it's additional fifteen thousand dollars, or fourteen thousand and some change, it's a no-brainer, we need to finish this master plan. I mean, for us to give it, give it up now, I think it's basically, it's totally wrong, okay? Because what's, what's left in terms of the work to be done is just like the survey among residents, things like that, the fifteen thousand dollars is gonna be worth it, because with that, if, let's say, an additional funding will be available in the future, then we'll be ready, okay? And also, if we have money in the budget, we can also do some purchasing of some trees if we decide to, because we already have a master plan. So, I, to me, it's a no-brainer, I mean, let's proceed with the additional fifteen thousand dollars to be spent. Thank you.
Dan?
My question.
This is your project.
Yes, it is.
What's the shelf life of this study? I mean, if we go ahead and completely fund it like it's been recommended, does this, and maybe this is a question for Len, how long does a master plan last, knowing that trees and plants and flowers all change over time? Will this, if we come back and want to use this plan, will it be viable five or ten years from now?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and honorable councilmembers. To Councilmember Coops's point, yes, this, this is a, a long-term plan for the city. Currently, we, we've never had an adopted plan. And this just gives us the tool for us to kind of take a look at areas and develop the type of trees and the, and the consistency, as well as the quantity of trees that we want to set the path forward for, for Bellflower, not just in the next five or ten years, but ultimately, long-term, we're talking twenty-plus years here in the city. So, that's really what we would look at. You know, there's, there's several trees that were planted twenty-five, thirty years ago that, you know, twenty-five, thirty years ago made, made a lot of sense to cities. They, but, you know, after the roots grow out for twenty, twenty-five years, that you find out they're not the best trees in the world to have in a four-foot-wide public parkway. So, yeah, this essentially just takes a greater look at what we have. So, West Coast, since August, they have walked up and down every street and looked at every tree that is owned by the city on the streets, on the parkways, and on the parks. So that was the bulk of that initial money that we've been reimbursed for, was them doing their fieldwork. And they were in there for, like I said, several months, three or four months, doing that for us.
Oh, good. That answers my question. I wanted to make sure we didn't complete a project that had no value five years from now, but it sounds like it's something that's rather permanent.
Yeah, I mean, this is essentially your general plan for trees. You know, you, you, we can get to a point where, you know, if, if the council sees fit at some point, we can bring forward recommendations to amend the plan. But certainly, this becomes the document that we will focus on during my tenure, during your next public work director's tenure, and, and way on into the future.
All right, and I agree with Sonny.
Mr. Mayor.
Finish it.
Mr. Sanchez, go ahead.
Thank you, and I will just jump in here. I obviously concur with Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Coops, which is why I kept it short and sweet. But, Mr. Gurecki, can you correct us, or can you provide us some information? When was the last time we touched on this item?
Probably when we brought the agreement with Green Latinos.
I'll clarify, from a master plan perspective, when was the last time?
We've never developed a master, there's no, we do not have a master plan here in the city.
I think the ROI here is valuable. Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, to that point, if we start to look at your tree assets in the city as just that, as assets, you're talking about a multi-tens-of-millions-of-dollars asset in your city. Part of what West Coast Arborists does is manage that asset for us as we would manage any other capital asset that we have in the city. If we look at our trees that way, we're talking about tens upon tens of millions of dollars in assets that it behooves us to have a plan for.
All right. I got one question. So, this plan, management plan that we have, does it call for certain trees in certain areas?
Yeah, so that's part of the final development of the plan is recognizing the types of trees that you want to see on a local neighborhood street versus a type of tree that you want to see on one of your major business arterial, arterial roadways. So, yeah, it'll, it'll go into that great detail on options for, for planting that, that sets our course for the future.
Okay. Does it include concrete-friendly trees?
There are concrete-friendly trees. We don't have a lot of them around here currently. But, but, but there are concrete-friendly trees, and, yeah, you want to take into account.
They're identified there, right?
Yeah.
That's saying.
You, you kind of have a good idea what they are.
I have an additional question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Sanchez.
Just curious, Mr. Gurecki, what does this kind of do for the additional part of the original grant for us? The idea of planting five hundred trees was the original goal. Is this something we're going to see in your, in the, in the budget proposal to address?
So, from, from our budget perspective that we have with West Coast Arborists, we always have funding in there to plant trees. Those are typically kind of done as, when we remove, remove a tree, we plant a tree. We've, we've been doing some heavy lifting with our, our current tree inventory along the bike trail, and, and trying, we have, you know, a lot of empty boxes.
Twenty-one.
Yeah, well, there's more than twenty-one.
There's more than twenty-one.
But between, between Alondra and, yeah, Alondra and Bellflower, yeah. But, um, I mean, ultimately, what it does for us is give us the tools on what to plant. The funding moving forward, if the council designates that they want five hundred trees planted, that's not something that we would, that we normally have in our, in our operating budget with West Coast Arborists, but it's certainly a, a capital improvement project that, that we could present and look at over the course of the next four or five years, how many trees we want to try to put back in the ground here.
Very good. And then last question or comment, I think. Mayor Pro Tem and I, and I discussed the possibility of an Arbor Day, Education Day. Is that something that is on the, in the proposed timeline for this coming, coming season?
I, I think it's something that's, I think it's something that West Coast would happily come out and do. They're always anxious to kind of come in the community and do community promotion opportunities. So we could certainly explore that and take a look at it. We can always, you know, find a spot for, for a tree easily.
Very good. With that, Mr. Mayor, would you like to entertain a motion? Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I have one question, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
If I can. Maybe a question for Wong Su. In the approved budget, we have hundred fifty thousand dollars for capital project tree master plan. How much of this has been spent already?
Councilmember Santaynez, even though this was approved, I don't think we have tapped into this fund yet.
Oh, so we have not, so we have more money?
No.
We have not.
Oh, okay. All right, so we can, we can invest thirty-five thousand out of this and maybe buy, buy some trees?
And could you keep us informed if we get that other twenty thousand dollars? I mean, I don't want to forget about the possibility.
Oh, yeah.
I'll send you a text message, sir.
All right.
So I got one, I got one question.
That's goodness, goodness. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just thought of another question, Len. So once we get this plan, and then the, the grant for a million dollars that we were awarded that we're probably not going to get, was the eighty thousand coming out of the million?
Yes.
Okay, it was. So, the, the guidelines of our management plan, if we were to continue to use that management plan, and then all of a sudden, say, two years later, the grant gets turned back on. So what we've done, we can get, I'm guessing we can get paid for if the money ever arrives?
The, so, so the grant application that we submitted, it basically had two phases. The first phase was the development of the Urban Forestry Master Plan, which is what we're working on right now. The second phase was to do a three-year planting and maintenance program with a local nonprofit that was one of the requirements of the grant. Wong Su and I had developed a, a program in hopes of utilizing someone such as Goodsoils to do up to two hundred trees a year, where they would not only be planting the trees, they would do routine maintenance of those trees and the tree wells for the city. And so, the, the bulk of, of the, the remainder of the grant was to go towards that program.
Gotcha.
If, I'm, I don't necessarily know, you know, knowing the uncertainty with the grant and seeing the, the, you know, the, the different, the array of, you know, federal programs that are being frozen out right now, I, I don't know if we'd want to go down that road to that extent.
Right.
Using a, a, a local nonprofit and trying to pay their salaries to, to do that work as well as all the trees and, and that process. We would, we would probably be better served at this point, yeah, just utilizing West Coast Arborists. It would be a little slower. The maintenance program won't be as robust or great, but we can certainly still get trees in the ground for.
Less.
Yeah, for money that we already have allocated.
That's why it's going to nonprofit. Okay. That answers my question. Thank you very much, Len. Okay.
Sure, I'll make the motion. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to authorize the city manager to complete the Urban Forestry Management Plan, currently in progress with West Coast Arborists, and designate an alternative funding source to complete the Urban Forestry Management Plan in lieu of awarded grant funds being suspended by the federal government.
I'll second the motion.
Do we need to be more specific on number two?
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, is.
I think they want to.
Like plant trees?
To use the capital.
I know what you're getting at.
Capital project tree master plan account.
What budget do you want to know?
Set a one?
Do the best we can.
Anasas General Fund.
Yep, which is where your one-fifty is.
We can adjust this account?
I believe that's in the General Fund, is it not, Anna?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. We currently have a tree management account in the General Fund and also in some special funding source, but we could use the General Fund for the difference that we're talking about tonight.
Coming from this account?
This account is in the Grant Fund. So we will just use the corresponding General Fund for the remainder.
Because it's budgeted already.
This grant is budgeted in the Grant Fund, yes, yeah.
And not the General.
Yeah, so we just need to pull the difference from the General Fund, yes.
Okay.
All right.
As amended?
As amended, General Fund.
Second's okay with amendment?
Yeah, I am good with the amendment.
Okay. Motion on the floor by Councilmember Sanchez, and the second by Councilmember Coops. Call roll.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Santaynez?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Smoot, Item 14B.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to move pretty quickly through this item, but this is consideration of possible action to authorize the mayor to submit a letter to the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors requesting action to reduce the number of vacancies within the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department and support adequate detention facilities countywide. As a little bit of background, I'm providing this slide from the California JPIA with regard to the Liability Trust Fund. As you all know, this is, the trust fund manages the liability associated with law enforcement services through the L.A. County Sheriff's Department. To gloss over this a little bit, you can see that those liability costs have been increasing fairly significantly, specifically within the last ten years, to the point that it's challenging the liability, the viability of the Liability Trust Fund. So, in next year's contract rates, in the Liability Trust Fund rate, there's an automatic half-percent increase that we're anticipating. We're already anticipating in our budget conversations, and that comes from if the, if the fund level within that Liability Trust Fund reaches a certain point, that half-percent is automatically triggered. It's not a vote of that board. So I only provide this as some context and to show where that five, that half-percent is coming from. So our Liability Trust Fund rate for the coming year will be thirteen percent as opposed to the twelve-point-five percent it is now. But importantly, looking back to 2015, sixteen, you can see that, that Liability Trust Fund rate was just six percent of the total contract cost for the Sheriff's Department. Next slide for me, Wong Su. Same sort of information, but projecting the claim liabilities for the Liability Trust Fund at the expected confidence levels and at seventy-five percent confidence levels, if we go down to that seventy-five percent confidence levels, you can see all of a sudden, the net position of the Liability Trust Fund really starts to be in question. So all of this is related to the liability associated with law enforcement as it's being provided currently. Next slide for me, Wong Su. So currently, the contract rate, which is, establishes the base rate for law enforcement services within the contract cities, for next year, the increase is projected to be three and a half to four and a half percent. They don't have that quite nailed down yet, but they have guaranteed us it won't be more than four and a half percent for 25, 26, plus the half-percent for the Liability Trust Fund. So we're anticipating four to five percent. Importantly, though, the Sheriff's Department, as you're all well aware, for many years has been operating at a deficit of deputies, more than fourteen hundred vacancies across the department. And keep in mind, the Sheriff's Department is the largest law enforcement agency in the country. To have a deficit of that many deputies has significant impacts on our communities. I think we can all safely say that. Specifically, in Bellflower, within your recent budgets, you have requested from the Sheriff's Department, although not been able to receive additional deputies to patrol our streets, and we haven't been able to get those deputies. Across the contract cities, the Sheriff's Department has a moratorium on increasing contract levels that affects us directly. So when they have fourteen hundred vacancies across their department, that has direct and, direct impacts on our community and the public safety in our community. They, the Sheriff's Department, when I say they, I mean the Sheriff's Department, have increased the number of, of academies, recruit academies, to try and improve that recruitment. They've hired marketing firms to try and go out and recruit new deputies into the Sheriff's Department. I think they had two or three academies this year. They're looking to do eight next year, which is fantastic if they can fill them. Those academies usually are in the hundred or so recruits range. They've been ranging in the seventy to seventy-five-ish range, which isn't great. And we'd like to see more of those, to be honest, to get more deputies out onto our street. Sheriff Luna has expressed very similar sentiments, that he would like to see those academy numbers increase and the number of recruits specifically increase. And the letter before you this evening expresses that. The second part of this letter, if you'd go to the next slide for me, Wong Su. The second part of this letter addresses detention facilities in the county. Part of the challenge that we face with law enforcement within L.A. County is frankly inadequate detention space. And specifically, when we talk about implementation of Prop 36, we foresee realistically that the county will have a need for additional detention space. That's something that I think the City Council expects a desire to see implemented and implemented well. Unfortunately, even if we, if somebody's arrested, tried, convicted, the Sheriff's Department has consent decrees to reduce the numbers with, populations within their jails. So it's, it becomes a trade-off of who do you put in jail. So this letter specifically asks for two things. Number one, to address the staffing concerns within the Sheriff's Department. And number two, to address the detention capacity countywide, because those are going to be the two critical factors in how we do law enforcement, not just in Bellflower, but across the contract cities. So the letter before you, the request before you is to authorize the mayor to sign that letter and send it off to the Board of Supervisors with your support. Happy to answer any questions, yeah?
Let me give you my colleagues a backstory here. I asked to try to get this on there, and it kind of grew. And our city, Ryan says, oh, I just got done with the Contract Cities Liability Fund, and says, this is happening. And, and I said, well, yeah, it's not only that, the prisons, they're not building prisons. We want prisons. We have no place to put these people. And then I started thinking, with the liability, there's, with the fourteen hundred, L.A. County Sheriff's Department has fourteen hundred vacancies that they can't fill for sheriff, for new deputies. And we've all been here, and they've been working major overtime, sixty, eighty hours a week or whatever, they've been putting in, and it's nonstop. I have to imagine our, our liability increase is because of the fatigue and overtime. Things are going to go wrong when you work somebody like that, and, you know, and the lawsuits are going to come up. So I think everything's tied together as, there's no deputies on the road. And as you can see, the state's here, people want, well, I want more deputies on the road. And things happen, and we can't get them. Two years ago, we budgeted two million dollars to get more deputies, and no, you can't have them because we don't have any extras, and nobody wants to be a sheriff at the moment. So this is what's driving the bus on this. As far as a, a letter going to the county supervisors, Luna's asked for more deputies, and he's kind of getting shut down. This is a way, and I would like not a, a letter asked for with just me on it. I would like to have you guys sign on it, too. I think more signers is better. I think it's more of a force. To come from the city of Bellflower is, we need help here to send it to our supervisor to ask, you know, you don't need to hire consultants to find out if Luna needs more deputies. That's where it's going. I think Luna is a sheriff. He knows if he needs more deputies. But I would like to, you know, hope I'm drawing out some dialogue. I just wanted to lay how this got here, guys, and, and if you think it's the right direction or not.
I'll sign the letter. I have no issue with that whatsoever. One of the questions I have is, if you have fifteen hundred employees that you no longer have, and you're now paying overtime, does that somewhat equate? Because that's a lot of money not to have fifteen hundred people unemployment.
Fourteen hundred.
Or fourteen hundred, you know. But I hear the same stories. There's a thousand necessary for the Highway Patrol, a thousand more for LAPD. They all have the same shortages. And then we hear about the retention, that you can go to many other cities, and they pay a twenty-five-thousand-dollar bonus just to leave the current L.A. Sheriff and go to a neighboring city, just because. and go to a neighboring city, just because they're having the same problem. But I guess that's my question, Ryan. When we, do we know whether or not they're spending all the money that would ordinarily be spent on the 1,400 people on the overtime? Is that what happens there?
Uh, there's certainly a cost to that overtime, because remember, overtime, obviously, the deputies are making a little more on that overtime, and there's other costs associated with that, including fatigue being one of them. And I think there's a fair argument to be made to what the mayor identified, that liability sometimes goes along with those increased costs, so that cost should be factored into that as well. From a contract perspective, the contract formula that establishes our base contract rate is based on a 56-hour car and a 40, it's based on the unit, not necessarily the specific deputy in that unit, so it doesn't directly affect our costs all the time.
But I'm just looking at the whole county system, you know, how many people are not there, you know?
Certainly, I guess there would be a reduction from the 1,400 vacancies, but there, there is a significant cost to the overtime, I would argue as well.
Okay, that's all I have, but I'd be more than happy to sign the letter.
Yeah. I actually would like, you know, input on record for at least our residents. We've had people, you know, come to this meetings before and not happy with us for our Sheriff's Department.
Looking at me, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, anybody, anybody wants to chime in, just chime in as needed.
Yeah, I fully support the request to add more, more bodies. I think the recruitment level needs to definitely improve. We, we need it. So, I'm on board with that. I'll sign the letter as well. My one question is more of a, a question to Mr. Smoot. Have you had, Mr. Smoot, have you had communications with Contract Cities and our executive director at Contract Cities regarding this item?
Not specifically regarding this letter, I have not, but I know Contract Cities watches this pretty closely, obviously. This is their, their primary function is to work with the liability trust fund and Cal JPIA to run the liability trust fund, also to work on our behalf to advocate to the County Board of Supervisors. I expect that they are already engaging in that conversation.
Absolutely. Yeah, so I would just urge you to have a conversation with Mr. Rodarte regarding this matter.
Yeah, Sunny?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments here, and Mr. Smoot, thank you so much for adding that information about the number of attendees to the academy, because I heard some comment that there's a lack of academies, but it seems like there's none, because if they cannot fill all the seats in the academy, that means that they're not recruiting enough individuals to join in the academy.
Yeah, even if they filled those academies.
Breaks even, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Attrition.
And there's attrition out of that, so that's good. And in terms of overtime, I, I remember about 10, 10 or some, 10, 10 years ago, or something like that, comments from the deputies is that they, they want to work overtime back then. Now it's the opposite. They don't want overtime enough because they are just inundated with overtime.
For now.
And it's like the mayor said, I mean, it affects their efficiency, their alertness, and their performance overall. So, I'm in favor of the letter. I think it's right on the spot to address the two major issues, which is recruitment and then the jail. So, I'm willing to sign the letter with the mayor and the rest of the council. And finally, I just want to address this issue with our residents. We need more deputies. So, if you know of someone who kind of fit the bill to be a good deputy in the future, please encourage him or her to join the LA Sheriff's Department, because we need good people, and you know, you know your neighbors, you know your family, so please encourage them to join. So, with that, thank you, Mayor.
Got it.
I, I agree with all of your sentiments, and will gladly sign this letter.
Mr. Mayor, if I might add quickly.
Yes.
When we talk about costs associated with the overtime and the increases here, it's worth keeping in mind, the costs associated with that are not just to the Sheriff's Department. For example, you all have spent multiple millions of dollars hiring Southwest Patrol. Part of that is to free up your deputies to go be doing what it is that they do best, and allow Southwest Patrol to take on some of those lower-level services. You formed a JPA with your surrounding communities with Lakewood and Paramount to address some of these ancillary services that free up that. So, the city of Bellflower is taking very specific actions and spending additional money on top of what we'd like to be spending on deputies to address these concerns, and we're simply asking the county to do something similar on their side.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just add one.
Feel free.
Comment that supports what we're doing tonight on this matter. One of the items we hear a lot of complaints about from our residents is traffic calming and speeding and just concerns regarding traffic. Well, for the last couple of budget cycles, we've tried to budget a traffic.
Traffic cops.
Deputies, more motor deputies and so forth, and we haven't had that ability to do so. And so, I think this falls in line with that, as we're supporting, as we're trying to address some of the concerns our residents have in our community. And so, you know, as I've said earlier, I will definitely support this letter. Thank you.
Yeah, it just, it just seems that something has to give somewhere, is having 1,400 vacancies is insane. And, and living in the community, I know this community, we, you know, the news never has anything good, there's, you know, the, the circle, the tire circle marks at every intersection, you know, the smash and grabs, at least that's down, but, you know, you can do major crimes and just get a ticket or something, and if you go to jail, you're out in a few hours. This is all connected, not just not enough deputies, but it's connected to the, the liability going up. The fatigued sheriff making, you know, doing things wrong or whatever, and then we get liability cases going up. Or hiring somebody that, you know, well, he kinda almost qualifies, because you, you know, when you get hired, you have to meet certain qualifications. You could be on the good end of the qualifications or the bad end. Well, if there's never nobody on the good one, you're gonna be higher than underachievers that just made it. So, talent is, is a problem attracting, you know, attracting any sheriff, so you're gonna get what you get. And then, we haven't built any place to incarcerate anybody new, any, any prisons, and the state, the state's responsible too, because the judges came down, you have to release people. Well, we released people, but no one's ever built anything to, we still got bad people running around, last time I looked, and no place to put them, so we just let them out on the streets. At some point, it's, it's just insane. I mean, is, is society is going to go away if you don't, you don't fix it, but I hope this is loud and clear to the Board of Supervisors, or at least our supervisor, that we all feel this way. I really hope other cities follow, but at this point, this is all we can do on the local level. You know, there was a time when the city didn't have money for new deputies, and finally, we get a little ahead, a little ahead, and yeah, let's spend a couple million. That was two years ago. And where are they at? Well, they won't give them to us because they said they don't have any extras. You know, that was kinda heartbreaking, so we spent $1 million on Southwest Patrol. We took $1 million, it was already budgeted, but all we have is security guards that are armed to, you know, makes, do the best they can. They don't have police powers. They can't really go after the, you know, the, you know, the, the bad guys, but there's an extra set of eyes to relay information to the Sheriff's Department. So, we always hear in Bell, City of Bellflower, myself and my colleagues, try to think outside the box. Staff does too. Hopefully, this is something that's outside the box, that something can become of it. And I appreciate you guys as gals to come along, and I think a letter with all our signatures is more than just one. I appreciate that, so. We need any action on this? I forgot to look. Is it just consensus?
Uh, well, I presume if you're all willing to sign the letter.
That pretty well says what we're doing.
Yeah.
We can go ahead and amend the letter to, to be a five-signature letter, that's what the council desires.
I would like to, for the record, I'd like the, the letter modified for all our signatures.
Certainly, we can do that. We'll take that as direction.
And then send it, send it overnight too. Sooner the better. Yeah. Wanna handle it? I don't know. Okay, we're down to the consent calendar. Any recusals or conflicts? No. Somebody wanna make a motion?
Item.
Of course you do.
15C. 15C, Mr. Mayor.
15C, that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Alright. You want PJ or?
Oh, no, I, I just wanna make a comment.
Okay.
Just a comment. I wanna take this opportunity to thank the Bellflower Moon Lions Club for hosting the, the car show. It draws a lot of people to the area, and lots of volunteers. I know that the Parks and Rec Department partners with them, but they do a wonderful job. And speaking of volunteers, I was at the, I was invited to the pickleball tournament last Saturday. It was run by volunteers at Thompson Park. A friend of mine goes to church, and then he said, "Sunny show up at the pickleball tournament." It was a wonderful tournament, run all by volunteers. The scorekeepers, the, the, the line, the line people, everything is, was done by, see, that's the, I speak about the power of volunteerism. That's why I wanna thank the Moon Lions Club and all those who, who run the pickleball tournament at Thompson Park. It was well, the, the auditorium was, was packed with lots of spectators, and lots of people coming from not only Bellflower, even from neighboring cities, as far as, as far as Carson. So, hats off to our staff, who are doing a wonderful job, and again, I wanna thank the volunteers who are working on this program, both the car show and the pickleball tournament. So, let's make a comment, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, and there was no cheating, I take it, too, right?
Well, I didn't witness any cheating.
Okay, well, that's, that's close enough. Alright, anybody wanna make a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Alright, we got a motion by Councilmember Coops and a second by Sunny Santinas, Mayor Protem. Without objection, that'll be the order. Comments? Coops, you have anything tonight?
No, I'm, nothing to offer tonight.
Okay. What about Councilmember Morris?
I really, oh, it is on. I enjoyed the student art festival this weekend. I thought Parks and Rec did a great job, and it was just, it was nice looking at all the students' artwork and, you know.
And they'll be in City Hall.
Yeah, they'll be here for next, next month.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, just touch on two of many ribbon cuttings that happened last week. One, the grand reopening or remodeling of Denny's over on Lakewood and Artesia, and then also the Bellflower Dental Office right here in front of the Edgeway Project. That was a fun event. Great job to the Mayor Protem on, on that ceremony. And then briefly, I'd like to just, wanted to bring up, I kinda wrote down for my comments here, more of a, an item that to be brought at a future meeting or for part of the study, sorry, part of a budgeting season. The, the concern that residents have been bringing up regarding street sweepers in both sides of a street being on the same day, I think it's something that I would like to at least get a study on at one point in time, if we would, as we're looking at our budget season, make that an item for us to look at, to budget for a study session to be conducted. To the point that there's, there's a lot of changes happening, some of these areas specifically, like the Mobile Homes Park, the Edgway, and other more congested areas have harder time parking on these street sweeping days, and so I think it be, it behooves us to, to plan for that as, as we look into the future. So, that was it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna piggyback on Councilmember Sanchez's comment about grand opening. There was also the grand opening of 7-Eleven in, in, in the Laredo tacos. It, it was a great event. Sorry, Mayor, you missed that. It's a, it's a, it's a wonderful celebration. It's on the northwest corner of, oh, no, northeast, southeast corner of Lakewood Boulevard and Gardendale Street. It was well-attended last Saturday, and I'm glad that we even got a chance, chance to try the tacos. For a fast food taco, it's good. Also, piggyback on Councilmember Morris, Morris's comments, the art festival. Mr. Milano, please extend our, my gratitude to Michelle Hardy for running this competition. Over 60 students participated from 15 different schools, so it was well-attended, and I just admire the creativity of the students. They, they did their artwork on the spot there, although they knew already the topic, but it was, the, the artwork was done right at Sims Park last Saturday. And thanks to the parents, the teachers, who encouraged the students to participate, because to me, every time a student is busy, that's always good. So, with that, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. You didn't wanna talk about the senior center?
Oh.
The groundbreaking?
You can. You want, you can.
You had a shovel.
You had a shovel.
I know. Sunny's more, he's real excited.
There you go. Today's a wonderful day for Bellflower. I'm so excited about this. We, we finally broke grants today for the Oak Center. This is the 12,000 square, square foot youth and senior center, located, to be located at Sims Park, where, right now, where the Volunteer Center building is located. So, we had, we had the groundbreaking today. It was well-attended. City Council staff, contractors, vendors, our partners were there. So, it's a very exciting times, and I was told that it should be finished in 18 months, so I look forward to that. I know that Mr. Gregory will deliver on time. No.
Except for the bid.
Yeah. And I spoke with the construction manager, so I want a specific date, okay? So, anyway, we look forward to that grand opening, so we, although we have received a note today that we, Speaker Emeritus, Anthony Randon missed the event. He's one of the, he did a legislation to fund part of this Oak Center together with his state senator, Archuleta. So, there, a lot of funding were coming in, at the same time, the county also is funding this great project, so it's something that we can look forward to. So, get ready, youth and seniors, sometime next year, hopefully sometime next year, it will be open.
Good job.
Thank you, Mayor.
How many pictures got taken at that event?
Tons of pictures. We even have a drone taking photos.
Yeah, I was there too, and there were so many pictures. We all go to events like this over the years, and I've been here the longest. I've never, ever seen so many pictures taken in my life at an event. There was literally hundreds and hundreds of pictures. And a lot of people too, as well, well, a lot of people there that, that participated and, and maybe because there was food there. Anytime you have food, free food, a lot of people show up. But it's gonna be a good project. It's been in the design, and to get it there, it's been like two and a half years, I think, to the making to get this far. And it's not a little project. It's a beautiful project and.
And don't we have enough money to pay for it?
Yeah, and it's paid for, which is kinda like we did with the main, main event center museum, that maybe we always try to make sure that it's paid for before we do it, and not rob Peter to pay Paul kind of a thing, and it seems to work here. And with that said, that's all I got. We're gonna adjourn this meeting to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council at 5:30 Monday, April 14th, 2025. Thank you, everybody. Oh, yes?
Yeah, every time.
Oh, every time, huh, so we can stalk them, for stalking purposes.